...easier than it has been in the past, which is still a complicated matter. And I just, it troubles me when I hear you say, like, you know, "This is what is best for us," or if you're going with Cleveland or whatever. That's what I'm taking from your response and from what you articulated here to us in reference to annexation. So I just want all of us to be cognizant of municipalities, villages, and townships, which a village, a township, is more easier to be annexed than a municipality that has home rules or what have you. So it is a little more complicated than that.
Let me respond to that. Go ahead. Okay, just briefly, when we were working with the cities that were considering merger, they were all cities, they were townships. And Moreland Hills, Orange, Woodmere, there was one, Woodmere was a village, but Orange, Pepper Pike, and Woodmere. There were four of them. But again, my point was, not to say that it's necessarily good for you. I'm saying is that you have to look at the facts because there is an argument to be made that it would be better for both cities to do this. And all I'm saying is, listen to that argument. I mean, I bet you if you took a vote here and went overwhelmingly failed, overwhelmingly failed. And every instance, you look around, it's very, very difficult to do this. And I was in the legislature for nine years, and one thing I learned above all was that you can kill something so much easier than it is to pass something. Glenn Johnson used to say, "Anybody can kick down a barn, it takes a unit and a building." It's a very difficult thing to do. So all I'm suggesting is, East Cleveland has some issues financially. And this is one option. And keep in mind that risk is receivership because that is out there. Now, I'm not an expert on receivership law, but I'm quite sure that, not even take East Cleveland out of the picture, just hypothetically, a city that has no money to provide any services, the state's not going to just sit there and let the people have no police and no fire and no garbage pickup. They're going to come in and they're going to say, "We're taking over here to get this straight." And so that's, I mean, that's what you've got to be concerned about is that it's not necessarily, you know, we can just stay on our own. If you don't have the wherewithal financially to do that, the state may intervene. And then it's not, you don't even have a councilman at that point. You've got a receiver like what happened in Detroit. I don't think they're going to be that different.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Poochblom, for your question.
Thank you. While there are issues, I was certainly trying to address to the mayor at his town hall at McGregor when he so quickly had the mic taken away from him. And there are a lot of ways that we could get more money. What I'd really like to address is some additional factors about the schools. One is that it was reported on WCPN about a month ago that Mayor Jackson does not want East Cleveland unless he hits the schools. And another couple of factors that I'd like everybody to know about is that there are other strengths that haven't been mentioned about the schools. One is that we're sending eight students to China and four of them got scholarships through Congress. Another is that we have a partnership with the Confucius Institute, and we have an elementary school, we have Chambers Elementary School, that offers both Spanish and Chinese. It has a Suzuki violin program, a band program, a new STEM lab as most of our schools do, except for Shawlumna, which is in Dania. And it has a gifted and talented program with very small classes and things that if more people knew about, I think we would have more students at Chambers Elementary School.
Thank you, Dr. Poochblom. We have some major partnerships and collaborations that will be impossible. You can say that, but these are late, so I appreciate the help on that. But I heard a conversation, just as you did, that Mayor wanted homeschools. And I don't think that if they go into a merger, this is just me, those people want to go into a merger where it's not told the truth to start with, and then we go into a merger, they're not going to let homeschools stay homeschools. I mean, it's pretty obvious. We're not, we weren't going yesterday.
I want to recognize Shawlumna. Shawlumna here? Stand up, stand up. This is being videoed, and this costs over $3,000 to do this, but we have an East Clevelander that said, it was so important, he would donate. We need to give him a stand. Thank you. Now, our president of council, Robert G. Thomas. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm glad to see everybody here. I think this is long overdue, and you know me, I always advocate for more participation. This hall should be standing room. And I want to say thank you to the participants of this town hall meeting, where I love Harvard and everything about Harvard. I'm still a homegirl. I can deal with Ohio State, Cleveland State, and all of that. And to my sister, Pittman, Ms. Pittman, Professor Pittman, I really admire you. I admire your contribution. I admire the fact that you are all grown from East Cleveland. But to the panel, we have some good people up here, and for the first time, I see some productivity and some good responses coming from both ends. But I want to say that East Cleveland is unique. East Cleveland needs to stay East Cleveland. First of all, I don't want to get on an emotional level. I'm going to say that we have, in East Cleveland, home rule. And home rule, I don't know how that would affect our home rule. We got to look at things that are coming down the pipe, that have been here for many, many years. And I like the issue that Sister Pittman brought forth, talking about what would be taken away from us. You don't take nothing or let somebody take something away from you. You give it, but you can't get it back. And basically, I come from labor, we don't give nothing. East Cleveland is, like I said, home rule. East Cleveland has a lot of potential. I'm not thinking about University Circle because University Circle could have negotiated to come with us a long time ago. We are always trying to mimic other areas. But there are things here in East Cleveland that we can cultivate and dominate and do what we need to do. My ward, Ward Two, is adjacent to Ward Nine, which is Kevin Conwell. And he is slapping at the jaws, licking at the jaws, wanting to get over the line to East Cleveland. He has said that, and I love Conwell very much. And on the other end, you guys, Joff, Joff, and talk about Palencia. They're all dominating. But I'm saying that East Cleveland could have dealt with the student, like we were saying a long time ago, dealt with the students, built dorms, which their building in University Circle, they don't have the land, so they're going straight up like China. China has no facility to go outside, so everything in China goes straight up or up at. We have the opportunity to spread out. We dealt with NSP dollars down by the area. Now, my question here to you guys is, my question is, and I put it in the thing with questions. What would happen, what do you think, the lawyers? What do you think would happen to our home rule? That's number one. Number two is that we need economic development. And do we think that that will happen? And if it happens, what do you think will come about? This is a three-part question. And the mayor has been very aggressive with his annexation tactic, but there has been no plan given to the city to deal with this. Can you ask my question?
Okay, Ed, you respond, and then Tony, and then Judge, you want to say something, Cassie. And Ed's got to go.
Yeah, I apologize.
Tony, get down. All right. Ed, Ed.
Thank you, I apologize. I have my son here, and he has to go to school with that. But as to home rule, again, if the two communities were to merge, you would have a councilman on the city council. And I know people say, "Well, that's not what you have now. You have a mayor, now you have a police force and all the rest of that." And the question, two questions. Number one is, if the services were provided better and the economic development was better and the community was able to do more in the merged circumstance, then you have to evaluate, is it worth doing that, given that we have a councilman as opposed to a mayor and all that infrastructure? And also, keep in mind the other question, which is, if finances do not turn around and they go in a decline, the possibility of estate taking over, receivership type of situation, where you have a appointed manager. In terms of economic development, again, I'd point to what Norman Prumbel said when Councilman Martin had on a forum earlier, where he said that it's difficult, and you should, part of this investigation, talk to some developers and ask them, you know, "What's holding you back in developing in East Cleveland?" And it may be financial, it may be that they don't have the ability to give the loans and the support to the developers. Like, you look at the flats he's making, all the state and local money that went into support that county money. Is that available to East Cleveland? Is East Cleveland, and would it be more available to East Cleveland as part of Cleveland? Those are the questions you want to ask.
I also want to say, I want to make--
Come on, come on, we've got some people standing in line, Robert, please.
Okay, I just want to enlighten the people that are here. The council has engaged Butler and King to represent us in garnering other options. The one option is all you have heard is annex. We are looking at other options, and until we hear those other options, I think it is imperative that our people continue to ask pertinent questions and relate to the questions and the manner in which Sister Pittman spoke. Thank you.
Thank you. Neil, Neil, you here?
We have a question from Ms. Armstead.
Okay, Ms. Armstead? All right.
Thank you. I appreciate Mrs. Attorney Pittman's-- I appreciate your intellectual take.
Turn your microphone.
I'll speak louder. My question is to Attorney Point. I've been following the last couple of years, the community's redevelopments across the country, let alone the world. I'm sure you've heard of the term gentrification. I am looking at, I mentioned to my husband about a year ago, I said, "You know, I got a feeling that Cleveland's on the map." People have fought wars over land. And this is part of the high-hogged community. A lot of funds have come through the county. They've all been either sub-downtown or over in the market area. There are apartments where people used to live at for like $300 a month. They've turned into $15,000, $25,000 apartments. Now, has there been a study? Because I know that maybe some of the colleges, and especially with you being in urban studies, you might be familiar with studies that have been made throughout the county for affordability, especially with the services like the Historical Society. They're working in the area, and they feel like we have limited funds to put in certain areas. And I'm noticing that there's people, masses of communities of people being moved around through the county, affordable housing, these people are uprooted, structures are torn down, and they're placed here, there, and everywhere. And I don't see an inclusion process going on here. And not only that, if East Cleveland is added to these other municipalities, will they be in a position where, because I know the developers come in and they get tax abatements. They get 10, 15, 20-year tax abatements, and the residents are the ones who have to take care of the taxes. When this occurs, the property values go up, and people become displaced because they can't afford those property values. Will there be some adjustments made there? Thank you very much, sir.
A lot of that, that question, that's a good question. First of all, as it relates to the whole issue of gentrification, in northeast Ohio, generally speaking, there's not a great deal of incident of gentrification from the standpoint, we're still a population declining region. The cities that really have the big gentrification problems are the ones that have growth rates where they're displacing people much more actively. New York City's a good example, having a much greater problem. Boston is a bigger example, that parts of Chicago even are, even though Chicago's population growth is declining. So it's not as much of an issue in Cleveland. And in Cleveland, there are issues where the rents are going up because of some of these areas. When you use the word gentrification, I think of it a different way too, is when you have younger professionals, people moving in, downtown's a good example of that. You're seeing a lot of people that are coming into our downtown to live there, and they're paying higher rents, and that's having a higher pressure on rents in some of the surrounding neighborhoods. But most of those units are in buildings that were not previously used for residential. As it relates to your last part of the question about trying to address the issue of equity, which seems like it's always an issue in Cleveland that we have to be sensitive to. When it comes to tax abatement and comes to how it's used, it's got to be available for everybody. And that's why I think that when it comes to how some of the housing projects in Cleveland and other communities are now proceeding, that you'll look for some way to have set aside to make sure that, you know, elderly folks or low-income families can also provide a decent housing opportunity. It's not going to be too expensive for them. So I think, and there are a lot of programs in place for that. So it's how you do that, that's available, but it's challenging.
And has there been a research, a program made? I'm sorry, has there been a research, a group of urban studies students put together?
Well, there's, yeah, there's a neighborhood progress saying, there are a couple of nonprofits that look into that and also are sensitive to providing low-income housing opportunities in camps throughout Cleveland. So there are different, there are different groups that have looked at that and that are actively engaged in trying to, you know--
I'm talking about specifically for this community.
Oh, for East Cleveland. I don't know of anything for East Cleveland. I mean, I really don't know anything specifically for East Cleveland. I do not know.
Thank you very much, Shawlumna.
Tiffany Fisher.
This is a senior at Shawl High School, where they actually have a dinner tonight with seniors.
Okay. All right. I asked you to come in, Stan. I asked for you, go ahead.
First, I want to thank, well, we all want to thank the people that really care for East Cleveland and Cleveland period. But I feel that we all have been told the same things over and over again, besides the schools and stuff that you guys talk about, that's really important too. But the small things are what make the big things go down. Like, for example, what about the kids in, you know, East Cleveland? You know, the mayor, what is he doing? And not too much of what he's doing, what are we? We all need to come together. In order for the mayor to do his job, you have to do your part too. But most of all, that I do feel is that, you know, there's not enough truth. Like, you guys explained everything, but there's not enough details for 99% of this people in the room to go home and think about it and be supportive towards. There's not enough details. See, I can go onstage and give somebody, you know, check somebody's heart, you know? You can tell somebody a thousand times, but if it's the same thing that you're saying over and over, these people will never get it. But the main part is East Cleveland. You know, everybody doesn't want to, you know, a lot of people doesn't want to support East Cleveland because a lot of people give up on East Cleveland, which is not exactly what you're supposed to do. What advice can you give these people to go home and even do little things like votes? What advice can you give them to support East Cleveland and to put more into their children, so the children won't grow up and be on the street and stuff like that?
I mean, asking for advice, I mean, I kind of follow on what Dr. Pittman said. And what's involved here? What's this really going to do? How is this going to affect us? And that's where I think you have to have a decision about really having a discussion and maybe putting together that commission or voting to do that. Really, there are two votes involved. You have to want to put together a commission to say, "What are we doing?" And then the second vote is, "Do we want to do it or not?" And until you, as I said when I started, until you put your toe in the water to discuss, "Well, how do we want to leverage as much benefit East Cleveland as a community as we can?" Then we really don't have a lot to talk about. You know, my view would be, if you're going to really look at this, I would leverage every single thing you could for the community that's going to benefit East Cleveland, which would be getting the county involved, which would be assistance for Forest Hills Park being fixed up, which means any assistance available to upgrade police and fire, to mean anything to help with your streets and road programs, to have an expansive economic development program that can be worked out with the city and the county and the state. I would leverage everything I could, including a discussion about the schools. By the way, this is me telling you this, you know? And then you decide if you want to do it or not.
Yeah.
And that's really all I can tell you, because it's really going to be a decision for this community.
Okay, yeah. It is our decision to, you know, come together and do something. Because if one person doesn't do it, who's going to do it? But the whole point is, and I also feel, not to be a rude thing, but I also feel that, you know, some people are afraid to speak the truth because of the mayor and, you know, the things that are higher than you in Cleveland. So you're afraid to speak the truth. Some people are afraid to speak the truth because you want to say your claim and you want people to look at you like you're clean. And you're not giving advice for the people to, you know, really change. So, you know, I'm not putting any pressure on the mayor or anything, but it is true. No one wants to stick up in this room and become mayor because ain't nobody encouraging them to be. And that's true.
I was just going to say, I think, okay, so I commend you for coming. And I've been wondering since I got here, where are the young people? And I would encourage you to go back to all those seniors who are graduating and say to them, "I have no idea what Shawl High School students feel about this issue." And I think that, I mean, and I don't know if the council or the mayor knows. And it is important that we have our young people have a say. And really, you know, I think you could be a catalyst for that, you know? And for your friends and colleagues, you know, where are the young people in this? Because they are affected by it too. And I think you have a say, and your voice should be heard. There should be a forum organized at Shawl High School where Shawl High School students and maybe Shawl High School alum can express their opinion, no matter whether they agree or disagree or what they think is in the best interest of the city, should at least be heard. Because right now, it seems like, as you said, there's sort of certain points of view that continue to get across, but we really don't have any forum for sort of other sort of discourse to emerge. And I think it is vital, if we are making a critical decision that will affect future generations, that the young people be heard. And I would say, from my knowledge to this date, there has been essentially, you are like a voiceless constituency.
Like, when I'm down, you know, a lot of times when I go downtown or whatever, and I perform at Playhouse Square, do musicals and all that stuff. And the people, you know, wearing the suits not to go by looks, anything. People wearing the suits, they see a child, it's like, you know, oh, whatever, that child is bad anyway. You can't judge how they act. I mean, it is 100% true that these kids are bad in East Cleveland, but only because they don't have the faith and know that they're going to go places to get out of East Cleveland. There is, they don't believe that there is artists in Cleveland, people that are famous living here. I know a couple of artists that I know. But he helps the children, and they all downtown and all that stuff. The small things, I can say, even though what I'm saying doesn't seem as important as school and all that, the school is important, all of that. But the small things are what affect the big things and bring everything down. The kids need faith. We all need, we need encouraging to know that we are going places, that we are going to get out of East Cleveland. Because when East Cleveland ring your ears, the truth is, it does sound, you know, bad, but it's not.
People have this, what we would call stigma.
Get the mic, young man.
I'll need it, I'll need it. I mean, I would choose, I mean, I need it. But what I want to say, all of us are rising from Shawl, we recently just graduated. And what do I know, it's always a connection from the school and the city. But even though we were raised in East Cleveland, we still are successful. We just graduated. You have to make sense of yourself and that's what's going on. So we made, all made, you know, their home. Because it has become their home and been their championship.
Okay, Jamal Johnson.
Bishop Johnson has a question.
Has a question, and Jamal Johnson.
Yeah, I'm going to keep this short for a moment.
Okay.
It's a question for, about the school system. It's been brought to my attention that it's a vote that's going to be put in place for the superintendent to retire and come back, like a double-dipping move. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Judge King, can you respond to that question?
One more thing before you do that. I got a big community cleanup coming up. Shawl high alum, all you residents, that y'all love East Cleveland. I would love to hook up with y'all. Y'all got your certain devices, I'll give y'all my number. So, thanks.
Please see Brother Johnson, we are going to do a cleanup, and he's been a help. But the asked question about the superintendent and double-dipping or something to that effect, Judge King, can you respond to that?
Absolutely. We have a hearing on June the 8th for the public to come out and discuss what you're asking about tonight. How do you feel about it? What do you think should be done about it? And either virtues or not so virtues, whatever you feel, but it's on June the 8th. We'd like you to come out at that time. You can call it whatever you want to, but it's legal. I just want you to let know that before you go into the double-dipping stage. This is what people do. There are about 14 superintendents, just in the paper not too long ago, because they have changed the rules for retirement, and because if you don't retire at a certain time now, you will not get that full retirement that people in the past have gotten. There are about, I think it was 14 superintendents who are doing that, who are retiring and asking to be rehired because of this. So you can talk about whether or not--
One more thing.
I beg your pardon?
What has been the grade for the superintendent on their tenure?
What has been the what grade where you are?
The grade, yeah. Every year, you know, you do the grade F, A, B, C, D.
For the superintendent, for the children?
For the superintendent.
Her evaluations have been very good, as I mentioned. We don't do A, B, C, D.
Well, I mean, I'm not, you know, in your field or nothing like that. But when I read in the papers and anything like that, Cleveland, East Cleveland have been the bottom of the barrel for the last 20 years. My take is this--
It's not the bottom of the barrel, it's not the bottom.
We close to it. But what I'm saying is this, if, how can we tell our kids to shoot for the stars and all this? We have a superintendent, superintendent that hasn't really been living up to expectations. We had this one year where everything going up--
Your expectation, that's why we have a hearing on June the 8th. You know, everybody can come in, say what they want to say.
What I'm saying is, what's the point of telling these kids to shoot for the stars? And this lady hasn't really been living up to her expectations or anything. It's been an F grade every year. I think for dishes, you got a D. There's no terms of coming back, getting more money. That's, you know what I'm saying? That's rewarded BS.
Are you speaking of the Ohio Achievement Test?
I'm just talking period.
Well, that's the test, you said, it's an F grade.
Okay, I want somebody after you to see you. Here's what, if you have a concern, and Mr. Johnson's question is valid, be there June 8th. Shawlumna, get the young people up there because they're going to be, June 8th with-- June 6th or June 8th?
June--
June, June 8th?
June 6th.
At what time?
6:30.
6:30, where is you? June 6th?
I can find out--
Oh, June 8th. Listen, June 8th, Shawlumna and other citizens, at 6:30-- 6 o'clock, and Shawl High School. Is that correct? Okay, let me repeat it again. Shawlumna, and people are concerned about it, please appear June 8th at 6 o'clock at Shawl High School. And we got 15 minutes, so you got to cut these long statements out. We're going to go back over here, we're going to try to get everybody in. So if you're making a long statement, I'm going to cut you off. I'm telling you that right now. So if, if you're making a long statement, I'm going to cut you off, I'm telling you that right now. I'm trying to get everybody in. So Shaw alum, come on, we'll give you a question.
May I just answer?
Oh, yes, Judge, go ahead.
I was going to answer the young man, but because of the time, the lack of time, I won't do it. But I have a list of all the gains that we've made. We haven't gone backwards, we've gone forward. I just wanted to let you know that. You will hear it all and see it all at that time.
Question, Shaw, but please.
If there is a merger on the environmental issue, you mentioned, the judge mentioned about the city's services, I'm looking confused because I'm union employee where I work at. Do you think they will allow East Cleveland residents to get inquired for those union jobs? What do you expect?
Uh, Cassie, you want to try to respond to that?
So I, I can't respond to that. I, uh, I don't, I don't, I'm not exactly sure what the question is, but I don't think I have the expertise to respond. But what I will say is, especially since our two attorneys have departed, that we need to have another public forum. All of these questions are not going to be answered tonight. I know Councilman Martin promised you, but we don't have enough time. So I would just advocate for another public forum, perhaps in another, uh, month. And where people can, again, ask these questions, have some attorneys present, have some experts present to adjust specific questions, uh, because I think that's a valid question. Uh, but, but the, the attorneys that might have been able to address it are no longer here, so.
Okay, uh.
Miss Saied has a question.
It's a line here, uh, brother, I see you. Oh, be the, go ahead, be the Saied.
I phrase that, be the Saied. Yeah, I just wanted, uh, yeah, just follow up with Doctor Pittman. I'm also alumni of halfway around any special reserve, so, you know, we need to get together sometime. But, um, anyway, um, I wanted to ask a question to the attorney that he left. Uh, I wanted to kind of, um, draw a kind of a vision for East Cleveland. I think that if we got rid of East Cleveland, that's almost like getting rid of a parent for our children. It was like the schools, the schools like our children. It's like, even though we supposedly are bad parents, we're not really all that bad. You know, East, East Cleveland council is not all of the rules or something like that. But it's like we're, 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 if you get rid of the council, or get rid of the government of East Cleveland and, 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 and all the residents, um, you're taking away a parent that is supportive of the school. So somehow in that mix, um, the students be like on their own. Or the schools would be like on their own, supporting themselves. And I think we need to think about that. That's, I think that's pretty important for us to be a continual support for our school system. Okay. And also I wanted to ask the attorney and considering, considering that he probably would give advice that, you know, it seemed like they're more supporters of keeping the merger going instead of, um, suggestions on how we can maintain our independence as a city and, and be productive. You know, they should be able to be able to give us that kind of advice. And they know it because it works for cities. But, um, anyway, as far as cameras, take the camera down, there are more people coming through the city and starting an economic base, uh, of more, more jobs in this community because most people are going out from the city, away from this city. And plus, not only that, we don't, we're not proud as a people. We even more proud as a people because, um, I was here.
Be the, be the one I was saying to you.
And then you're going to cut me off. But we need to try.
Talk to your neighbors, show up, get the information, make sure you vote. That's the important thing. Uh, Ms. Morgan, come on. Ellen Mae Morgan, go ahead. Uh, Ms. Morgan, please, a question, we, we only got about 12 more minutes, please. All right, thank you.
I'm going to make a statement because the panel is gone. But one question will be to the judge. I'm a ward leader and I've been on the I committee for the schools as well as the city. First thing I want to say to the doctor, the doctor over there, say it. That Cleveland just wanted to school from schools. That's why they closed down Fenton because they're hoping to get Shaw and the rest of the schools. So we, we're not going to take L's on that. Number two, this merge is just like a hospital takeover, okay? Now, I studied the facts here, Cleveland do not offer anything to East Cleveland. We got good schools, police department. They have a bad police department, bad fire and schools. So what do they offer us? Nothing. Number two, I look at our council and our mayor. They have not tried, or if they tried, nothing has been submitted for economic structure to come into East Cleveland. There's been nobody as grant writers. We have lost funds because they wasn't on time to do things timely. Now, you say this is a gold mine, this city is. But we have to have people accountability to go down, talk to Casey and get money. If Pittsburgh had got money from the federal to help him in emergency money, what is East Cleveland doing? There's things that we need to study. You can look up the Case Western Reserve for economics. But we have to have people that's willing to roll up their sleeves and fight. We would have gave up the library, sent me back to us, it's not going to fight anymore. Now, we have to have people sitting at this table for us, for the city, accountability. And a lot of people is not going to give East Cleveland money because of certain people. If you can't govern your own economically in vain and balance the state, then how are you going to balance the city? Hello? You got to have people, but they have masters and PhDs is about to come over.
We'll see in 12 minutes.
That's it. I made my statement because the other people.
Thank you.
I got a question.
What's your name, sir?
My name is Jordan Pittman.
Okay, go ahead, Jordan.
My question is for Una Keenan. I had, I would like to ask you, uh, first I want to say thanks for everything that's been going on in the schools and how we up for bound and all of the success that we have. But I want to know what's being done to develop our students and citizens so that they can be building the libraries and be a part of like the tearing down of this, uh, hospital? What could be, uh, what is being done to help prepare our students to prepare to compete in the global economy? Since finances and economics is such a big problem, how can we be prepared, better prepared to, um, develop and build like, you know, what's going on in our city, the development and the, um, buildings and stuff that's getting ready to be happening? How can our students play a part in that? And what's being done to prepare them for the global?
Okay, brothers, go ahead.
Can you say this part? Or you say how, we prepared them to do this?
Yes, yeah, that's a question.
I don't know whether you know or not, but we just, now, we have just put in our STEM lab, we have STEM lab at every school where they are being prepared to have the academic experience that they need in order to go out and do other things, science, technology, world. That's one of the big things that we have is the STEM lab. And then we have the academic programs where we partner with other districts and with other agencies in order to get our children, our students to be able to be prepared to do that. We have a lot of programs, an awful lot of programs. I could give you a list if you'd like. But, uh, as Mr. Martin said, he called us, we had to go a little faster so I couldn't give it all to you.